Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Marion Commission Meet. This will serve as our regular meeting, March 11th, 2019. The next thing on our agenda is the invocation. Our Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Mayor Gower. Mr. Gower?
Our Father in Heaven, we bow before thee in gratitude for the many blessings that we receive with thy hand. We're grateful for the gift of life, for our community, for all our citizens and all those employees and the officials that serve to make our community better. We're thankful, as we enter this Easter season, for the gift of thy Son Jesus Christ, for the atonement he's made on our behalf. We're especially thankful for the hope that we receive through him that, as we repent of our sins, that we can receive forgiveness, that we can improve our lives and become better. We're grateful for all those who make efforts to share these important truths in our community, to make us stronger spiritually. We're thankful for this country in which we live, for the freedoms and opportunities that we enjoy here, for the relative peace and prosperity that we have, and for the laws that make these things possible, and for the men and women who serve in our communities every day to help protect and serve, and the men and women that serve in our military to protect our freedoms here and abroad. Father, we pray for thy Spirit to be upon us. We pray for discernment, help us in our efforts to lead and govern our community. Father, we are aware that there are many families that have bowed down in grief within our community that have suffered loss. Particularly, we are mindful of those who have lost young ones in their lives, within their families. We pray that thou will continue to watch over and be with them, to comfort them, to strengthen them. Help us all to reach out in love toward those who have suffered loss. We pray for guidance, both for ourselves and for our employees as well, that they will continue to serve in diligence. Please help us in our efforts to make our community better and stronger, and help us as adults to set a proper example and help our youth, who are maybe struggling at times and who are trying to find the right way to do things. We pray that we would be worthy examples for them. We love thee and we ask for these things in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please, and the flag. Tonight, to lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Tony Navy Junior ROTC, and with us tonight is Ensign Marino and Lieutenant Commander Ramirez.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, march. Right face. You may be seated. Next item on the agenda is approval of the order of the agenda.
Sooner, second.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the second reading of rezoning the property at 786 Thompson Drive. And our city attorney, Mr. Adams, how are you doing this evening?
I'm good, Mayor. How are you?
Doing well. All right, this will be the second reading. I'll go ahead and do the second reading, and then we might have a public hearing on this proposed rezoning. And if you're here and you wish to make a comment on this proposed rezoning, please step to the podium and say whatever comment you may have to conclude with the second reading. Bill Ordain by the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas George is hereby ordained by authorities same firm now, fact is, was long ordered since the City of Douglas George adopted by the Mayor Board of Commissioners since the City of Douglas George on June 30th, 1993, as amended in the comprehensive plan of the City of Douglas George adopted by the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas George on October 8, 2007, as amended, stands amended as far as by title, unless you have to be zoned in one industrial. All that type of part of land lying and being located in the City of Douglas George Land Lot Number 130 with six manages for Coffin County, Georgia, being more described, the fall being hollow track two deep consisting of 1.02 acres as shown and depicted. On a certain flat prepared by Statewide Surveying Company and dated from 8/10/2011, recorded in flat number 110, page 68, being the public register of Coffin County, Georgia above, is a portion of property obtained by the Douglas Coffin County Industrial Authority and that certain instrument dated November 17, 1987, recorded deep at 272, page 294 in the public register of Coffin County, Georgia, often read the first time to the regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas George on February 25th, 2019, read at the same time, passed and ordained at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners, that property advertised and captured and acquired on the charge of the City of Douglas George on March 11, 2019. All right, if there's anyone here tonight who wishes to make a comment on this proposed rezoning, please come back next Monday night. Oh, no, I'm just kidding. Please step forward and say whatever comments you may have. All right, apparently there is none, Mr. Baron is ready for action. At this time, I entertain a motion. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items. As always, we'll have our city manager to read those off.
Thank you, Mayor. Items 1 through 9 has been brought forward on the consent agenda, and I'll read those. Item 1, approval of February 25th, 2019 minutes. Item 2, approval of the contract for the airfield fencing project at the Douglas Municipal Airport. Item 3, approval of the 2019 CDVG grant application. Item 4, approval of the special noise permit for Southside Saturday Events. Item 5, approval of the Pedal for Peace Stop All Violence Event Road Closure. Item 6, approval of water waste water supply bid for warehouse stock. Item 7, approval of electrical supply bid for warehouse stock. Item 8, approval of the annual baseball, softball, and swim equipment bid. And item 9, approval of the guaranteed maximum price for Davis property site work. That's all items from the court session.
Thank you very much. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Sooner.
Second. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. City Manager, we did not have any items brought forward.
No, sir.
Correct? So if you would, let's strike item number 7. I'm sorry I didn't do that at the beginning. Wasn't sure. We're good?
Good.
Everybody's good over there? Next on the agenda will be staff comments, and we will have Mr. George Henson. How are you doing, George?
Doing well, how's everyone?
Doing fine, thank you.
Just to share a few announcements, our next residential junk drop-off date will be on Saturday, March 16th, from 8:30 until 12:00 noon. That's this Saturday. Just reminding citizens, we make it very convenient for you on the first and third Saturdays to get those neighborhoods. Her number is 4843, I'm sorry, 3843302. Also, our Douglas Parks and Recreation Department is now taking registrations online. To go there, just go to the City of Douglas website under Department, Parks and Recreation, and follow the link that will take you to the online program. I think it's very convenient for our citizens to be able to now register the kids and adults for programs online. We are, the City of Douglas, we are, we are looking for volunteers who would like to serve or help to launch a Keep Douglas beautiful chapter here in our community. We know that this is a national, Keep America Beautiful, different communities have it, but we want to start one here in our community, because there's a lot of cleanup efforts, and we want an organization who can help kind of be the catalyst to just bring collaboratives together and organize it all. And if anyone has a heart for it and they're interested, they can call the Public Information Community Development Department at 383-0277, and we'll be glad to take your name down. And once we get enough volunteers, because this would definitely have to be one of those chapters that's volunteer-based and ran. So we think it's time, we have enough going on to start one of these in Douglas, so we really want everyone to spread word and hopefully sign up. We have some full-time job opportunities, firefighter, police officer, animal control officer, level three mechanic, and parts, and inventory manager. You can go online and set up a profile and apply online through our website, or you can come see Ms. Tammy and Christie right here in City Hall. Those are the announcements that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Henson.
Two things. First one, foolishness, boss. Keep America Beautiful, I'm doing my work with my face here to keep America beautiful. That's the first thing, Mayor. But Vicki Lewis is on her way from the hospital. She just texted, and traffic light blew off the thing, and the law was here, so she's coming to do a presentation. So y'all go ahead and I guess do y'all's bad part, and then when she comes up, then we'll come back to that.
Okay. Let's get started with Mr. Moore.
Well, I just encourage people to abide by the rules of keeping the cuttings that they do and the shrubber that they put on the street, blow it out, and then walk away and leave it. And like in our neighborhood, they usually come out there on Thursday to pick up leaf and limbs. Well, when people cut it and pile it up by the road today, they don't get it till Friday or Thursday. And there's a lot of it out there, and there's people that still cutting the grass and blowing it up in the road. And it is an ordinance against that, and putting up the trash cans. They're supposed to put them up like in my neighborhood, and send us, they picked them up today. And some of them leave the trash cans out there two or three days, and they could be cited for doing that. And we encourage you, when the trash is picked up, try to get your cans that night and put them up, so keep the neighborhood looking pretty. And some of the people talking about moving out to keep it looking good, and Jerome, he's probably one of them, but anyhow, we appreciate the people and what they do, and we're getting a little rain since we had Hattie this year, and we're getting some more now, so Jerome, he's finally got dried out. He came out a while ago, and he was still soaking up some of it. So thank you, and thank you for what you do, and everybody be safe, and if you have a problem, call it in and let the people know, and give them the information, and they will try to take care of it. We thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, yeah, we've kind of had a busy week, had an eventful week, and had a, just a lot of things going on, had a lot of good things going on with, introduced the new police chief this week, and welcome him. He's had about a week, I think, behind the desk now. Came in to not look indifferent, and we almost didn't recognize him in uniform here, so we welcome you, and I hope the community has also been very welcoming. We also see Ms. Vicki Lewis in the audience here, and we welcome her. And she's from Coffee Regional Hospital, and I currently have nothing but good things to say about the hospital, having had a little experience, well, not myself, but family member this weekend, and my hat's off to your staff and your physicians, and the new cardiac unit is phenomenal, so I'm very pleased and proud to have a part in that, and I don't want to steal the mayor's thunder here, so about the, what we're going to do for Coffee Regional here, so...
Oh, yeah.
With Coffee Regional, not for, but with, so thank y'all, and I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Pearson, after Commissioner Pearson, we're going to take a pause and talk to Ms. Lewis for a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to quickly say to the citizens of Douglas, I'm glad that, I think it's our local police department or our local law enforcement, they're presenting Pedal for Peace on March 23rd at Willa Park. And I'd just like to encourage all of our citizens, especially our youth, to go out and take advantage of that. I see that they're going to have several motivational speakers to come and talk with our young folk. I think that's a very great idea. They're going to be giving away some bicycles. I think Sergeant Williams played a part in trying to help get this together, and several of the other officers, but I'd just like to commend our police department and law enforcement at this time for putting this on. Secondly, I'd just like to say welcome to our new police chief. I didn't recognize him when he walked in during the work session. I had to take a second look, but we're glad to have him in our community. Look forward to welcoming and working with him and his family when they get settled here. And just like to say just thanks to the citizens of Douglas. I just appreciate representing all of you. Lastly, I'd give everybody a quick reminder, on tomorrow night will be the program, the gala for Commissioner, not Commissioner, Deacon Sidney Harrow. Thinking about his daddy. But anyway, so those of you who have not got your tickets, you can still get a ticket to attend on tomorrow night. It's at 7 o'clock at Gaines Chapel Church, so let's go out and render Mr. Harrow our support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's all I have for now.
Commissioner Pearson, that's Gaines Chapel, uh...
I'm sorry. Thank you for the correction. Young Chapel. Young Chapel. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor.
And Mayor, I forgot to mention, we had Ms. Kathy Cole here from the Coffee County School System.
Good job.
So let's all, with the cameras rolling, let's all, you know, we want to make a special note that Thursday afternoon from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Coffee Middle School Auditorium, the Coffee County Schools putting on a huge help fair, their 2019 help fair, and the mayor is going to go and wear a t-shirt and a cape, and he's going to dance. They're going to do hero, they're going to have heroes from the community doing a special dance. So she recruited him tonight. You can go and see if he does, if he follows through with that.
You saw that was a shot fired.
You see where, yes, she invited all of us as heroes, and we were very honored and very pleased. Hope we can make that. Again, that's from 4:00 to 7:00 for the general public. She's inviting everybody, all ages out for music. There'll be DJs, there'll be vendor tables set up, and this is going to be held at the Coffee Middle School Auditorium. Thank you.
Mayor, we're going to have the oxygen tank.
They'll have the oxygen tank for him, you think? We'll be sure Coffee Regional's there.
Yeah, book him.
There we go.
I remember, like the United States Military fired on me. All right, we're going to, and I'm glad you remembered that. We're going to pause in between the comments, and we're going to take a timeout to bring Ms. Vicki Lewis from the Coffee Regional Medical Center. You often hear that in the City of Douglas and Coffee County, we have a great working relationship, and one of the things that actually serves as a catalyst for us moving forward is our hospital. You just think about this here, two years ago, we didn't have the cardiac unit or that facility there, so that sort of helps us out. We are looking at opportunities to bring more services to the Coffee County area that we're not having to transport people to Jacksonville or somewhere else. Ms. Vicki Lewis and her staff, along with the physicians and everyone, a collective effort to try to improve and enhance the services that we already have, and then to introduce new ones. And the reason why I say that, in order for the City of Douglas and Coffee County to move forward, what we have to do is we always have to be looking for innovative ways to maybe help one another. And as you're going to see in a few seconds, the City of Douglas and Coffee Regional Medical Center have an opportunity to help fund some projects that are going to be going on at the Coffee Regional Medical Center, and it's all because found the grant somewhere that's going to be able to help out our citizens. So I will give Ms. Lewis a couple of seconds, a couple of minutes, go over there and tell us a little bit about it. I hate to put you on the spot, and then I'll come out there.
You need something done with that hair. Thank you so much, Mayor Polk. On behalf of Coffee Regional Medical Center, I'm here, most importantly, to say thank you. We are very grateful for the support of Mayor Polk and the commission, and Charlie and the administration from the city. This USDA loan grant that we've been able to apply for and achieve could not have been done without the city. Our four service lines, including heart, cancer, women's health, and orthopedics, will greatly benefit from these dollars, as will the behavioral health initiatives that we hope to work very hard on with the city. And I know that's near and dear to Mayor Polk's heart, but we have worked very hard on that and have some terrific ideas that I think will make a difference in the city. So on behalf of the hospital, thank you all very, very much. We really appreciate your support.
So what we're going to do, we're going to come over here, and I think we have a $2,000 charity. As Ms. Lewis was saying, all the facilities that are going to benefit and the programs that are going to benefit, this loan is actually for $2 million, so we're going to put this to great use to make sure that we take care of the citizens of Douglas and Coffee County We're good? There you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mayor Council, before Ms. Lewis gets out of the room, before you have a chance to sit down, put a little pressure on y'all here tonight. One of the initiatives that we've been working on behind the scenes a little bit is this mental health issue, and so there's a collaborative of Unison Health, Coffee Regional Medical Health, South Central Primary, and some other ones. Our health fair, I think in October, November, where they have it, we're going to have a mental health symposium then, and because as you know, Coffin County has a lot of mental health issues out there, and much time we brush it under the rug, or look other ways, or push it off, and recently, there's been a lot more chatter and certain events that has occurred in our community, and I do think it's time for all the who's who's and the shakers and bakers of the community, and there's going to be an initiative to triage and to work people into the system, whatever, to get help. Where to go, what's the next step, what do I do? And so we're working on a virtual help center, and then at some point... So that we, and other members of the Mayor Council, so that when we go forward with this, we have a lot of support.
Thank you for bringing that up. It's not backing us, it's a reporter. We're happy to partner with you in the City and South Central Primary Care, and I know that working together, we will...
Stealing gas, tires, batteries. Commissioner Taylor, your comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to piggyback off of Ms. Moore and Ms. Henson about keeping America clean where it does as a whole. The problem that we are having is that our citizens are taking their sofas and chairs and whatever they do not want, and dropping them off at the dumps that they have set up at various locations, and the citizens have asked me to ice the citizens not to duck those sofas and chairs and things that they have at their house that they don't want in front of the dump, because when the guy get ready to duck the trash, he cannot duck it, and sometimes he drives off and leave it, you know? So Ms. Henson already have stated that we have two junk days that you can bring your trash. Only thing you have to do is load it up on your trailer. They'll be more than glad to take it off the trailer once you bring it to the site. Please, ma'am, please, sir, let's not do that. Citizens, let's keep our yards cut, because like Ms. Moore said, we've been getting a lot of rain, so we need to make sure that we keep our yard looking good, you know? Again, thank you all for everything you said.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Before we start, Mr. Chief Police, after him, I'm going to give you an opportunity to go over there to the guy that has disappeared, and give you an opportunity to introduce yourself to the citizens, okay? So just wanted to give you a heads up. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Good evening, Mayor. Kind of going along with something that Charlie mentioned, you know, we're our brother's keeper. There's a scripture I think we're all familiar with in 1 John 4:21. "If a man say, 'I love God,' and hath his brother, he is a liar; for he that loveth not his brother whom he hath seen, how can he love God whom he hath not seen?" And this commandment have we from him, that he who loveth God, love his brother also. We're all familiar, we've had some of our high school students who've taken their own lives in our community. It highlights an ongoing issue and problem that our young people face, and I know it's, every generation of our youth have challenges in their lives, but when we know about these challenges, we have an opportunity to reach out and look out for them. I've mentioned this before, you don't ever know what somebody else is going through in their life, so I would encourage us all to make sure we're paying attention. I've encouraged my children as well. This sits on me. I've got a daughter who's a senior in high school this year. I've got two teenagers in the house, you know, and I teach them to please be mindful and respectful of other people. We don't always agree with each other's opinions and maybe the way we do things, but that doesn't mean that we can't respectfully disagree, and we see this on a national level. It seems to be eroding, but we have the opportunity in our community to define civility, to speak with tact and respect, and I think that's the example that we want to set as a governing body, and it's also the example that we want to set for our young people, and we want to encourage each other to, you know, like Mama said, if you don't have something good to say, keep your mouth shut. There's a lot of negativity, you know? We've always loved, you know, we razz each other, we pick at each other, you know, out of love, though, you know, we just like to tease. But I tell you one thing, it's kind of, it got on me, this new show they got out there where they just, they hurl insults at each other, I think, for the majority of the show, and I'm just, I don't think that's proper entertainment, you know? And young people and us old people, we need to be mindful of those things, and do things that are going to strengthen each other, uplift each other, and if you're going to take shots, make sure that the other person understands that, you know, and that they know it's coming, you know, because you love them and you care about them, you just tease them. We have to watch that in our house, because sometimes people think they're being funny, and next thing you know, somebody's getting hit.
That's a good thing.
I want to give a couple shout-outs. Kevin with ESG, who manages our public works and waters, been doing a good job around our neck of the woods and my district neighborhood. Just really been thankful, and I think a lot of our citizens see the improvements, you know, as we get these, you know, we've been having a lot of rain, in case anybody hadn't noticed, but I don't see as many complaints about areas getting flooded, and I know they've done some work on the ditches in our area and making sure things are flowing, they're checking out, you know, where the rainwater's flowing, making sure it's getting to where it needs to go, how it needs to get there, and I appreciate it. And our citizens, people made comments to me, and I just want to give them a shout-out. Also to Stevie and Parks and Recreation, they got Willa Park looking nice, making sure that grass is cut and everything trimmed up now that we're getting into warmer weather and things are growing. It's nice to look out and see, you know, some of the beauty that's out there, and it's well taken care of, and I, you know, and all you that use that park and go by there, you know, that's a very popular place to be for our citizens, and that makes them enjoy it even that much better. Also like to welcome our new chief, Shane Emerson. You'll get the hero from him, he's gone 10-8 with us. We're glad to have him. I would think today, US Open Door Policy would encourage any... U.S. open door policy would encourage anyone out there who's got questions, wants to meet him, get to know him, know their relationship, know what he's here for. Make our community better, stronger, safer. We've got a lot of ties between our citizens and our police department. That's why he's here. That's why we chose him. And so far, thank you for the choice. Glad to have him. Glad to have him in his family as well. His wife is going in pretty soon. Those that don't know, he went to ABAC, he's got a daughter at ABAC. So he's got some ties down here in South Georgia. Glad to have him. And what's been said before, we've got that nice junk drop off situation going on this Saturday. It's one of our Saturdays. So if you don't have a truck, hit up one of your neighbors, somebody you know's got a pickup truck. I'm sure they'll be nice enough, you know, take about 10 or 15 minutes to haul something away from you, for you. But that's all we got to do is get out of that yard. I promise you they'll help you unload it. But let's do our part, you know? I see things getting better and let's just keep after it and encourage our neighbors and our friends. And if you've got, I mean, we've got elderly folks that can't hardly get around, you know, go ask them, hey, get something I can help you move. I'm sure they would, they would welcome the help and contact us. We got the 311 number to get assistance. All of us were listed on the city directory. We can do something to help y'all. Please reach out, let us know. Thank you, Mayor.
So what we're going to do is, we're going to take a few minutes to let our new chief of police introduce himself. I'm not going to sabotage his name. What I do is just say Ed Miss Teen. How you doing, chief?
How are you? I've had a very warm welcome this week. It's been a busy week. Spent a day cleaning out my desk and trying to find where to put all that stuff that's been there for many years. But I've met, I believe, all the police officers and all the detectives. I've done a couple ride alongs and I do have an open door policy. And I've had a couple of people already this week come by to see me, talk about some issues that they've had. I welcome anybody to come see me. If I'm not there, we've set up a point, I'll be glad to meet at the office or come to you. As a matter of fact, I went on a ride along the other night. A citizen brought a concern to me and I made a point to follow up the next morning and call them back, let them know that their issue had been handled. Somebody was actually in jail. So my office is open, my phones are, are open. Anybody can call me anytime and I look forward to meeting with the community. I told the police officers that we are going to be polite, courteous, and treat people with respect the way we want our kids, our wives and our mothers treated. And I look forward to forging those relationships with the community. And I respect professionalism, that's what we're going to be. But if anybody has any questions, feel free to call me and we'll make time for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome again.
Yes.
So that brings me to my comments. First comment is, you will see that Commissioner Durham isn't here. Actually, he's out of town. He had a previous engagement. So that's the reason he's not here. My next comment is the city employees, you know, we all sit up here, we throw our accolades to our city employees and this and that. And I want to say this right here to the citizens of Douglas. For the city to run as smooth as it does, it takes a lot of people pulling in the same direction every day, all day. Now, when there's a little hiccup, wish that you be patient. Because I guarantee you, the city manager and his staff, they are vigorously trying to resolve that issue and to get things back to normal. Always think about the electric department. When you hit that light switch and that power comes on and it gets illuminated, it takes a lot of folks to make sure that that light switch comes on. Parks and Recreation, you know, our community development, human resources, human resources have to make sure our 180-plus employees are satisfied, they're taken care of. You got finance keeping us in, in line with the budgets. Just all over the place, you got the, the new fire, police chief, the fire chief trying to keep us safe. And I just want the citizens to understand, there's a lot of effort that goes in so that they're not seen, that they are not necessarily needed to make things run smoothly. And as I said previously, when something goes awry, trust me, they are moving to make sure that everything gets back to normal. I do want to welcome our new chief. Going to learn how to say his name. I think I'm just going to go with chief for now because I don't want to sabotage his name. The junk drop off, Commissioner Taylor said that he had some citizens that were complaining about they were dropping sofas and stuff off at the Dipsy Dumpster or in other areas. Look, on Saturday, just take it a little bit further. The guys down there would take it off the trailer. As a matter of fact, I am looking for a truck now. Got a couple things I need to move, so I'll be going over there looking sad face at my daddy's house. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So please take advantage of that. I mean, a lot of citizens have taken advantage of it, cleaning up the neighborhood, doesn't cost you a dime, just a little sweat equity. Get down there, we have some guys to help you take it off. My next two items are a little serious here. You know, I've been talking with some of the young adults about bullying. I don't know if there's a crisis hotline for somebody that's being bullied. I don't know if there's a crisis hotline where a friend of somebody that they think is being bullied can pick up the phone and call and try to get some type of intervention. This hits home for me. One of our children was bullied while they were in school. We went through the standard protocol. We talked to everybody that we could talk to. At the time that my daughter was in school, there was something called student intervention and thought that was going well. The person that was bullying my daughter, in the midst of the intervention, threatened her. There's nothing that can be done to that individual. There's nothing that can be done to that individual. Because the rules at that time said the person hadn't done anything to my child. It was just all talk. You know, we all respond differently to numerous situations. And just because you respond this way, somebody else may respond this way. And I just want to be a part of the conversation when we get the opportunity to really address bullying, not only in the school system, but in our community. I mean, it is a, is a very serious problem. We went through it. I was talking to my wife and I said, you know, when our daughter was going through it, she was like, yeah, it lasted awhile. I said, yeah, it probably lasted a couple months. She said, no, Tony, it lasted for almost a year and a half. Almost a year and a half. So my thing is this right here. If there's anything that I can do, if there's anybody out there that is trying to get a collaborative effort, or if there's already something that's in place, I would like to be a part of. I would like to lend my voice as the mayor of the city of Douglas. My cell phone number is 912-383-2182. If you have a problem, give me a call. Because up here, we represent all citizens of Douglas. And we want to make sure that there's an opportunity for that child or adult that's being bullied to reach out, to reach out. My next thing is also near and dear to my heart, mental health. You know, our society has numerous injuries and conditions and illnesses that we treat. And those are some conditions or illness that we can run an MRI, we can run a blood test, and it shows up. It shows up. Well, you know, people suffer, suffer from other things that we can't see and we don't understand. And I am excited that Coffee Regional is going to be taking a step to have a collaborative effort with Unison, the city, to try to get something in place so that individual that has a problem, that has a mental issue, that they can be treated here. Now, I am fully invested in this, fully invested in this. And I'm going to tell you why. Where I work at, I see this every day. I understand the hardships and the trials of the family members. I understand how it impacts them. And you don't know what that family member goes through when they have a loved one that is faced with mental issues. The military PTSD is real, is real. And we have to be willing as a community to stand up. You know, I have a couple of my friends, because I'm friends with everybody, that has mental issues. Mom called me, hey, he won't take his medicine, he won't take his medicine. I jump in my car, go around there, look dude, what's up? I need you to take the medicine. Well, I don't want to. I'll take it later. No, I don't trust you. I don't trust you. If your mama called me, I need to see you take this medication. On my way to church, the mom called me, said that my friend was out there at the hospital acting up. I had to get dressed a little early. Went out there to the hospital and talked to him for about 45 minutes, prayed with him, had to, he had to sing a song to, to get him stable enough so that he would take the medication. He had taken his IVs out. But on my way to church, I had to divert because I understand the importance of somebody taking the time out to listen to him. Now, a number of citizens may pass by him and think nothing of him. Uh-uh, not me. I got to have that conversation. And I'm glad that the city was able to partner with Coffee Regional to get this, something in place. We can take a test for a broken arm. That mental issue is real. It is real. I have one of our clients that's afraid of the rain. Is afraid of the rain? Think about that. Afraid of the rain. So guess what? Sometimes when it's raining, I take my break and I go look for them, try to give them a ride to where they're going. Sometimes I find them up on the, a shelter, a arnie. Hey, you okay? Yeah, it's raining, it's raining. Hey, look, let's get in my car and I take them home. I'm telling you, mental illness is real. And if I have anything to do with it, we're going to be at the forefront of trying to make sure that we have something in the city of Douglas that gives our citizens that are suffering from mental illness a place to go, someone to talk to. Make sure that we have qualified people there to be able to address these issues. Those are all my comments, didn't mean to lecture you, but that bullying is for real and mental health is for real. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. The motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you. Camera off.